Hello, Maika. Aloha for joining today's Wednesday, yeah, today's Wednesday, February 16th, 2022, at the 1:00 PM joint Agriculture, Environment and Water Land Committee hearing in Committee Room 229, and video conferencing which includes the audio and video of remote participants that's being streamed live on YouTube. A few housekeeping announcements, you'll find links to the viewing options for all Senate meetings on the live and on-demand video page and legislatures website at capital.hawaii.gov. And in the unlikely event that we have to abruptly end this hearing due to major technical difficulties, the committee will reconvene, discuss any outstanding business at 1:30 PM on Monday, February 21st during our AEN via video conference time slot, and a public notice will be posted on the legislators website. Our testifiers, all testifier audio will be muted and video will be disabled until shortly before it's your turn to testify. And because of our 90-minute time limit for each of the AEN hearings, there will be a two-minute time limit for all testifiers, and we'll have a virtual countdown timer on the Zoom screen. So please be aware of the timer. I will be announcing only the testifiers who will be providing testimony via Zoom, and for the complete list of testifiers, along with all of the written testimony, please go to the legislators website. You'll find a link on the status page for the measure. And we also apologize if the closed captioning does not accurately transcribe names. Okay, so the first measure we're hearing is SB 2946 relating to irrigation appropriates funds to the Department of Agriculture for water source infrastructure and the maintenance and improvement to the Kauai ditch irrigation system, also known as the Minnehuni ditch irrigation system. So first up on our testifiers, we have Brian Cow from the Department of Ag. Meet yourself, Brian.
Chair, excuse me, this is Phyllis Shimobukro Geyser, Chairperson. Brian Cow is available to answer questions.
Yep, he's right. Oh, I've got him on as a testifier.
Yes, he's available to answer questions. The department stands on his written testimony. I'm sorry if I'm speaking out of order.
No, that's fine, that's fine.
Thank you.
Next is Kendall Matsuyoshi from the Local Food Coalition.
Good afternoon, Chairs Gabbert, Inouye, Vice Chairs Nishihara, Kiparagron, and members of the committee. Kendall Matsuyoshi testifying on behalf of the Local Food Coalition. We will stand on our testimony in support of the bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Kendall. Next is Maika Munikata from Ulupono Initiative.
Good afternoon, Chair Gabbert, Chair Inouye, members of the committees. Maika Munikata, on behalf of the Ulupono Initiative, will stand on our testimony in support of this measure, just again emphasizing the need to maintain, repair, and really hold on to our water resources within the state to provide affordable access to our agricultural lists across the state. It's a really important resource, and really agriculture can't happen without water. So just truly appreciate, Chair, you folks hearing this measure, as well as a future measure on this agenda. Thank you very much.
Aloha, Maika. Next is Brian Miyamoto from the Hawaii Farm Bureau.
Good afternoon, Chairs Gabbert, Inouye, Vice Chairs Nishihara, Kiparagron, and members of the committees. Brian Miyamoto here on behalf of the Hawaii Farm Bureau. Will stand on our written testimony in support. Just want to point out that this particular system does provide water for small farmers in Waimea on Kauai. My understanding is half of them are Kauai farmers, so we do ask for your support. Again, you heard from Ulupono and many others, water is critical for farming, and we do ask that you support this measure. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much, Brian. And that's it on our testifiers. There are a total of 15 in support and zero opposed. Members, are there any questions? Okay.
Chair.
Yes, Senator Favella.
Yes, I'm just kidding. Is anybody from the Department of Ag? Yeah, hi. When this is, I guess, go through and approve, how long would it take to get this thing up and going to, I guess, the renovations or improvements of the stream?
Thank you for the question, Senator. I would like to ask Brian Cow to answer the question or give a best explanation of a timeframe.
Good morning, Chairperson, members of the committee. Unfortunately, I'm not in a position to give a time estimate. This is not our bill, and we're not aware of the exact scope of the project. We would have to work with the people on the ground in order to start that out and see what needs to be done.
Oh, yeah, I understand that. The reason why I'm asking is, okay, so it's not your bill, and then you got to work with the guys on the ground from your point to their point to even get that started. What is the timetable?
Um, we would probably ask for allotment of the funds sometime in September or October, and from there, it just depends on how long the funding takes to come across.
The only reason why I'm asking this is because these things are great to get done on a timely matter, and I just, I just hope these things don't get tied up and it'll take longer than the money lapses or something lapses, that we kind of complete this project because these are not wants, you know, these are things that is needed. So I just hope everybody can work together and get this thing done in a timely matter. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Senator. Okay, next bill is SB 2996, appropriate 600,000 to the Department of Land and Natural Resources, research, extension, and control of the little fire ant and other harmful ants. And let's see. First up is Department of Ag.
Aloha, Chair Gabbert and Chair Inouye, Vice Chairs and members of the committee. Phyllis Shimobukro Geyser for Hawaii Department of Agriculture. We stand on our written testimony in support of the measure and available to answer questions. Aloha.
Aloha for this. Next is Marigold Zoll from DLNR.
Good afternoon, Chair Gabbert, Chair Inouye, Vice Chairs and members of the committee. Marigold Zoll, on behalf of the Department of Land and Natural Resources. I have Chelsea Arnott with me to answer any questions, should the committee have any, and we stand on our written testimony in support of the measure. Thank you.
Thank you, Marigold. Next is Robert Masuda, DLNR.
We stand on our testimony, Ms. Chairman, and I'm with Marigold, Chelsea, and David Smith to be available to answer questions.
Okay. Next, we have Kristi Martin from the UHPC SU Coordinating Group on Alien Pest Species.
Aloha, Chair Gabbert, Chair Inouye, Vice Chairs and members of the committee. Kristi Martin with the Coordinating Group on Alien Pest Species, Cgaps. We're in strong support of this measure. One of the functions of the state has been to provide support for the Hawaii Ant Lab. Ants are really unique creatures, and they require special pesticides and application methods to control or eradicate little fire ants. For those that don't know, little fire ants are capable of nesting anywhere on the ground in leaf litter, behind little tiny pieces of bark, all the way up to the tops of trees. And back when these ants first showed up in Hawaii, we did not have any legally available pesticides to treat little fire ants. You can't throw granules up into trees and have them stick. It was the Hawaii Ant Lab that developed these compounds, ways to stick them up in the tree, and registered them, and they pioneered the way forward to be able to allow us to eradicate these things. Hawaii Ant Lab is, has a shortfall of funding, and we're hoping that some of these funds could be used to support their services. They're working on additional treatment methods. Available for questions. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Kristi. Next is Tim Lyons from the Hawaii Pest Control Association.
Up present, Chair.
Thank you. Brian Miyamoto from Hawaii Farm Bureau.
Thank you, Chairs, members of the committees. Brian Miyamoto on behalf of the Hawaii Farm Bureau will stand on our written testimony in support of these pests.
Thank you, Brian. Next is Cass Vandewood, testifying as an individual. Cass?
Up present, Chair.
Okay. Uh, let's see here. Any questions for our testifiers? I have one for, I'll start off with Kristi Martin. Kristi, my understanding is the little fire ant showed up here in 1999, is that correct?
That's our understanding. Well, that's when it was discovered. It probably showed up a little bit before that and allowed it to establish to a level where we could detect it.
And do we know how they got here? From where they came from?
I don't believe anybody actually knows how they arrived, but they are tramp ants, and what that means is that they travel with commodities that we move around. So it was probably in something that was imported, obviously, well, hopefully accidentally. And they continue to spread hidden in commodities, anything from, on Maui, they found them in a stack of roofing tiles that had been stored in an infested area, but also sometimes in agricultural commodities, even household goods.
Okay, and there are they, I know they started on Hawaii Island. Are they on all the islands now?
They are fairly established in many locations on Hawaii Island, so that's a source population where we continue to get ants moving inter-island. There's a pretty large population out in East Maui, and Hawaii Ant Lab, as well as Maui Invasive Species Committee, are working on eradicating. It's over 200 acres in jungly forest with some houses scattered in there, but good news, they're winning the battle because of you folks' support of these programs. They are in 27-plus locations on Oahu. That may be a surprise to some people right now. They are in just a couple of locations on Kauai. We're all using Hawaii Ant Lab tools and methods to eradicate where we can.
And none on Molokai or Lina'i, yeah?
I believe Auntie Lori and her team at MoMISK are still doing early detection work, so so far, none that we know of on Molokai. Lina'i, we have had a few incursions there. The Hawaii Department of Agriculture has been the lead on that, and they're doing a fantastic job.
Thank you, Kristi. Members, any other questions? Okay.
Yes, Chair, just, yeah, just to share as well, we are, as you did state earlier, we are time consumed this afternoon, and so if we can start limiting our testifiers, our testimonies as well, because just to let everyone know, if we don't complete the hearing today, these bills are going to die. So there's no deferment that we can do unless something happens and we're allowed to do that. So just a reminder, because we only have, as of now, I think, 45 minutes. Thank you, Chair, as you reiterated at the start of the hearing.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Okay, next up is, and there were 33 in support of the 2996 and one opposed. Moving on to the next measure, SB 2964. Let's see here. Relating to ag districts, authorizes recreational athletic venues and cultural activities on existing golf courses within ag districts. First up is Rodney Funakoshi from the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development, OPSD.
Good afternoon, Chairs, Vice Chairs, and members of the committees. OPSD stands on its written testimony offering comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Josh Hargrove from the Prince Waikiki Hotel.
Aloha, Chair, members of the Senate. I'll just for the sake of time, I'll stand on my written testimony and just, just to add, in support of this bill, I'm the general manager of the Prince Waikiki and the Hawaii Prince Golf Club, one of the golf courses that's impacted by this. But then in addition to just requesting your support and possibly finding a pathway to also, in addition to these activities, have a pathway to apply also for special use permits to be able to do some things that may not fall within the scope of this, such as for our particular golf course or wedding, or something such as that. So thank you for considering this and having this on the docket.
Aloha, Josh. Next is Kevin Moore from DLNR. We have Kevin Moore, Russell Suji, Ian Hirokawa, and Sang Kim from DLNR. Are they just available for questions, or is anyone going to be testifying?
Good afternoon, Chair. Is this, you're on SB 2964?
2964.
Yeah, we were signed up to testify on 2664, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Yep, 2964. Anyone else on 2964? All right, members, any questions?
Yeah, Chair.
Senator Favella.
Can you get the Farm Bureau?
Yes, Senator.
Yeah, I understand. I see that you guys are opposing this, this measure. I need some clarity because Hawaii Prince Golf Course is in my district, and there's a lot of activities in my community. Without that area, we won't have activities. So this is going to restrict activities, or this is going to be able to allow them to have activities?
Thank you, Senator. I, our concern is, and we understand this would only apply to golf courses as they currently are, not additional uses, but we're always concerned about protecting agricultural lands, and I know this is applying to golf courses, but we don't see any real definitions of what recreation athletic venues are, or even cultural activities that promote the arts. And also, what happens if the golf course ceases? Are these activities are still going to be allowed? So we're just concerned, if you look at the bill, there's not a lot of information on the bill. You know, we are protective of 2054.5 and any additional permissible uses in the ag district. So we are, we're just concerned that it's broadening the scope of what's going to be allowed on golf courses and the potential impacts that it may have for golf courses that do have agriculture surrounding. So we just wanted to voice some concerns. Again, we're not really clear of completely what's being asked. It's pretty broad, the language in the bill.
Thank you. Who got the guy's name from Hawaii Prince Hotel?
Josh Hargrove, is he still on?
Yes, I am. I'm sorry, what was the question?
The question is, you just heard what Hawaii Farm Bureau is opposing the bill. So I guess, what is the scope of what venues you guys are anticipating to have on, on you guys' golf course property? And you guys need this authorization?
So I think, I think it's going to depend on each golf course, but for Hawaii Prince Golf Course specifically, the item that we'd be looking at is potentially weddings, to be able to have an outdoor space where we'd be able to do this. And then perhaps we already have our hotel facility that does the receptions, so perhaps we'd be able to now have a wedding facility. We go out there, have the arch, take the photos by the water features, all those things, and then either have the reception back at the hotel or at the clubhouse. Currently, we can't offer that. So I kind of have similar questions on the, on the verbiage, just, you know, is that within the scope of this? And if not, could we then have a pathway to make sure that it's a special use permit? So it's a one-time permit, you know, based on each individual event, or some avenue to be able to have the conversation about this, to make sure we do it appropriately as well?
Right, thank you. Well, the reason why I bring this up, Chair, is that I know a few golf courses in our area, mine in your area, Chair, that wanted to do racing, racetrack on the areas that is set aside for ag. So that's the same concern that I have with Hawaii Farm Bureau. But if you're talking about just a wedding and that kind of scope, not athletic racing or other kind of activities, then I can understand that it's going to be a problem. But I don't know, Chair, I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you, thank you. Thank you for your guys' time.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Senator Casio.
Chair, Brian, if you can come back on, I just had a question, the Farm Bureau. And I'm kind of bewildered to begin with, why we're, with our sustainability, food sustainability plans and security plans as they are, why we're even using ag lands for golf courses to begin with? And I know this happened long before I arrived. In 2005, it seems like there's a trend to, from, from 2005, a trend to not allow that. Can you speak to that briefly?
Thank you, Senator. Yes, I believe that they're allowed up to 2005. And so, so I guess these are applying to those golf courses in the ag district that have been grandfathered in, in Chapter 205. So, so again, we're just concerned with whenever there's additional permissible uses, there's a lot of permissible uses in, in Chapter 205. And so we always bring up concerns because we believe agricultural land should be used primarily for production agriculture, but we do understand that this is on current golf courses, and there are non-ag activities with golf on current golf courses in the ag district. So we do always bring up concerns that we want to be cautious on what is being allowed, but we don't want to limit, again, certain activities that may not have the impact. Again, if it, if it's kept in the footprint of the golf course, we don't want to see expansion of the golf course with these additional uses. So again, that's our concern.
Thank you. Moving on to SB 2664 relating to protection of taro. Creates a classification of agricultural public lands entitled taro lands. Appropriates funds to the Department of Land and Natural Resources to create an inventory of lands classified as taro lands. And the testifiers I read earlier, all from DLNR. Kevin Moore is up.
Good afternoon, Chairs, Vice Chairs, Committee members. Kevin Moore with Land Division at DLNR. We'll stand on our written testimony, offering comments and an amendment, and we're available to answer any questions. Thank you. And the other testifiers from DLNR are also just available for questions.
Great. Thank you very much, Kevin.
Thank you.
And at this point, members, are there any questions? Or the folks from DLNR? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to SB 2665. Okay, let me find that one. Relating to the protection of taro prohibits the Board of Land and Natural Resources in declaring residential development areas and acquiring lands therein from disturbing wetland taro lands and infrastructure on undeveloped lands. Establishes a fourth class taro lands classification for public lands. Permit structures for low-e taro fields to, in the agricultural district. Establishes growth and perpetuation of traditional Hawaiian crops as a goal of the State Planning Act. Authorizes the Board of Land and Natural Resources with the Taro Security and Purity Task Force to create an inventory of taro lands. And let's see, first up on that is Kevin Moore from DLNR.
Good afternoon again. We'll stand, the department will stand on its written testimony, offering comments and amendment, and again, the other testifiers are here just to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Members, are there any questions for DLNR? Okay. And then moving on to the final measure.
Sorry, Chair, I have a question for DLNR.
Go ahead, Senator Casio.
Yeah, just in reference to them saying that land use commission being more appropriate, can you just give a brief reason for, for your suggestion?
Sure, thank you. So, you know, our department doesn't have any particular expertise in identifying taro lands. You know, so we, we understand that the Land Use Commission has planners and probably with the mapping capabilities that they use, can probably identify those types of resources better than we can.
Okay. Thank you. And moving on to SB 3011 relating to agriculture. Certain state leasing statutes to maximize the benefit to the state of agricultural lands and to help the state achieve its economic and food production goals. And first up is Walter Bowen from UH.
Well, thank you. Aloha, Chairs Gabbert, Inouye, and members of the committee. We stand by our written testimony in support. And any questions, any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Walter. Allison Cato from the AG's office.
Thank you, Chairs, Vice Chairs, and members of the committees. Allison Cato, Deputy Attorney General. We provided written comments based on one particular subsection that requires a lessee who suffers a mental or physical disability to submit certain documentation to the Department of Agriculture. This requirement appears to be based solely on the occurrence of the disability or the loss suffered, regardless of any action being sought by the lessee or impacted. This requirement raises potential discrimination concerns. The department recommends amending this bill to limit that section to circumstances initiated by the lessee. Specific language is provided in our written testimony. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you, Allison. Next is Department of Ag.
Aloha, Chairs, Vice Chairs, and members of the committee. The department stands on its written testimony respectfully opposing the measure, and I have Deputy Morris Attar available to answer any questions, and Brian Cow with the department. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Miyamoto from Hawaii Farm Bureau.
Thank you, Chairs, members of the committees. Brian Miyamoto on behalf of the Hawaii Farm Bureau. I will also stand on our written testimony respectfully opposing. Just wanted to point out that we absolutely support new farmers, but we need to also support our current farmers who have a proven track record and allow them to continue, especially those that have the succession plans. We are big supporters of the state purchasing more land so that we can have more of these ag parks and non-ag parks for more farmers, especially some of our new farmers. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Next is Elise Nielsen from the Kihei Poultry LLC.
Aloha, my name is Elise Nielsen, owner of Kihei Poultry LLC on Maui. And this is regards to SB 3011. And the both Chairs, Vice Chairs, and members should all have a copy of the written testimony representing Kihei Poultry stand on this bill. It seems that there might be some internally confusion regarding how to fulfill 2003 Act 90 state and individual county goals regarding furthering food security, self-sustainability, and supporting local farmers and ranchers. And that includes new ranchers and already established farmers and ranchers that would benefit from having state land available to them. My request is that all involved departments and committees don't defer this matter. As one, it was mentioned earlier, anything deferred today, well, those bills will simply die today just because of time. But this is a matter that's important as it affects not only the sustainability of small farmers and ranchers, but also the, all those in the community that we could be feeding if we had the support of the state. So much time and money has already been spent by the state on training new farmers, conducting studies through UH, and collaboration with specialists regarding the impact of agricultural practices on the land. It's time to put it all into action, set up farmers and ranchers on available and suitable state land, and take on any issues as they come, instead of continually putting everything on hold based on all the what-ifs that might be an issue. Thank you so much for having an opportunity to testify today, and let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you. And that's all of our testifiers. Members, are there any questions?
Question.
Senator Fadella.
Uh Hawaii Farm Bureau.
Is it Farm Bureau Senator?
Yeah, you, yeah, you're fine. So I understand your opposition. So what is really saying that is to get state land and give it to private farmers to farm or to lease to these private farmers?
Uh I'm sorry, I don't understand the question Senator.
The question is, this is updating certain state leases statutes that maximize the benefit of the state agricultural lands. So if you guys um if we as a state agricultural still to me, I didn't hear it from you guys yet, and always what Senator De La Cruz always emphasized. How much land does the agricultural community state needs to get to our twenty forty-five or whatever, or doubling our food supply and all of this? So if this is a way of double doubling our food supply or utilizing this land that we don't have a plan for, I just wanted to know if is that's your opposition to the bill because you guys don't want to give up the land? I I I'm not I'm not registering on that. I don't understand.
No, no Senator, we absolutely support uh the goal of doubling food production. We support the goal of increasing agricultural production. But one of the provisions in this this bill is actually um reducing the lease terms from sixty-five to thirty-five. So we're we're shortening the terms. So we think that it's it's um, you know, again, we understand intent, but it's limiting our farmers' ability to do what you're asking for. So you know, there are provisions in there, the extension provisions, the initial term provisions. And and we know there are other measures that that want new farmers on some of these lands. We absolutely want farmers on state lands and public lands. But we we want to protect those farmers that actually have proven track records that are on the lands currently and allow them to continue. And especially as a broad up Senator, uh we we're very optimistic that we do have some of these farms that have the succession plans that we've been asking for where the kids have come back from college and wanted to take over the farming and ranching operations. So that's why we 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 did talk about advocating for and we have in the past for the state, for the legislature to purchase more lands, advocating for act ninety so we can transfer those lands from DLNR over to DOA so that we can have more lands available for new farmers, but also allow our current farmers to continue to farm those that are farming and ranching right now.
Thank you very much for the clarification. Thank you Chair.
Senator Casio.
But I I kind of have a follow up to that um Brian, if you're available because it's it's my understanding and um that that a person, the part of the reason why it's dropping off the this is for for Farm Bureau, um you know, reducing the lease to thirty-five years is because there's a lot of people selling off the remainder of their lease at a high cost. Um and it's not necessarily benefiting those incumbent uh new farmers that we're trying to encourage. And so in a process going through a lease uh so this bill suggests then that actually the lease renewal would benefit um and and be more egalitarian in terms of its benefiting rather than just those who can afford to buy big lease, big money leases or higher higher cost leases.
Yeah, the hard costs is actually are are an issue. That's why again, the the DOA's lease making ability not necessarily taking uh highest and best use and and having that et cetera piece and and background. So you know it's not a perfect system, but we it works for our farmers. I mean, it's a it's a great system for our farmers, we believe. And so that's where our opposition comes from. Um you know, we want to encourage those that are currently farming that that want to continue to farm the farm. And we think that this measure and some of the provisions within it may restrict it. We we hear the concerns. Um but again, we do respectfully oppose this and we think that the lease um procedures within the DOA, um we are comfortable with it.
Chair, I have a, oh.
Go ahead, go ahead Chair, go ahead.
Sorry, um no, you can continue and I'll I I'll defer to you if you have more questions and then I'll make a comment.
Yeah, just to follow up, but well, are we actually with with Brian Miyamoto and I appreciate your your explanation, but are we finding that it's uh we're finding that the leases that are able to be um uh purchased are purchased by wealthier or conglomerate farming rather than smaller farmers. And I think that's to the point of what um the Poto um small scale Poto farmer is bringing up.
Yeah, yeah. And again, we support small farmers, new farmers. We understand it. Stand the the economic challenges, the capital investments that are necessary. And that's why we are, we advocate for more land. Preserving the lands that we have in agriculture as we discussed in the previous measure that we we oppose and and identifying new lands that maybe are um in jeopardy of being sold to private entities that may not have agriculture um interest, even though it is agriculture lands. But we can uh support all of our farmers, small, medium, large uh current farmers and absolutely branded farms. We're 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 great supporters of of Go Farm program and encouraging farmers. We talk about all the time, our our farmers are sixty plus years old, they're aging. We need to replace our our farmers. But we also need to support those farms that are currently on. And again, I'll I'll repeat identifying and and having the state purchase agricultural lands. Transferring the lands from DLNR so we have bigger inventory so that we can accommodate all.
Could you offer some amendments uh Brian that would appease those, but still keep the intent of the of the bill would be nice. But I I'll yield Chair, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um thank you as well. And I can see and hear um the opposition of the Agriculture, uh Department of Agriculture. And as a farmer and as a a leaseholder of a small ten acre farm, but let me say that if you read the bill um there is argument with regards to page two on then extensions as well as page three on dispositions. The Department of Ag already does that. And uh they're they're good landlords. Let me share with you, they don't put out uh I I would say I rarely see um DOA auctioning lands off if it's already an ag and in uh activities. As an example, anyone who has uh is suffering of um some pandemic or unable to because of age or because of the death of a farmer and then the wife has the lands which she can't use anymore. I mean, not the ability to do farming uh and to raise the kids. DOA accepts the return of lands. So I just want to share with you folks that what we see here, they're already doing. They have loan programs. And um if something happens uh with the families or the farmer, they always accommodate um and able to either during the termination of their leases or potential extensions, they're willing to negotiate because they have the authority. So uh that's all I want to say is that the rules that they have uh for years and years um is already there. And so I can see why they're in opposition. So I just wanted to share with you folks that it seems like there's no problem unless we're talking about major, major big lands that will open up uh such on the Big Island because you don't have lands here available um in as if someone wants to start another sugar plantation. So that will be the effects of of something like this. But as I can see for what the current status of DOA, there is, doesn't seem like there is a problem, except as Brian Cow from Farm Bureau is uh saying that I think to enhance and encourage agriculture and to have a sustainability in throughout the state that we talk about, just have the lands transferred on act ninety from DLNR to increase our land availability for farming. That's all I had to say. Thank you Chair.
Thank you Chair. And with that, I will turn it over to you Chair as Waterland has the lead on the last form.
Hey, thank you. Uh next up is SB twenty four eighty and it's relating to the Waikiki irrigation system. It authorizes the issuance of bonds for the Department of Land and Natural Resources and Agribusiness Development Corporation to purchase the Waikiki irrigation system on the island of Oahu. One second, let me get to my page. Okay, testifying on SB twenty four eighty, uh we have comments from uh ADC or the Agribusiness Development Corp.
Yeah, thank you Chair and Vice Chair. So Jimmy Nakatani for Agribusiness Development. In the interest of time, you have my written testimony uh with comments and everything. But I think this is a very, very important issue, uh very important bill. Um just looking at some of the testimonies from Dole, I would suggest that you amend the bill to say that instead of purchasing, because they're going to donate the land um that the the bill should, you know, maybe amend the bill to put to fix the spillway versus purchasing the land. That would be my comment. Thank you.
Uh thank you. Uh we do have uh several testifiers from DLNR. Uh and Ian Hiraoka, are you going to speak on behalf of DLNR or is uh let's see, Kevin Moore?
Oh, uh thank you Chair, I can I can present. Thank you.
Okay Ian, proceed.
Well, thank you. Uh thank you. Good afternoon Chairs, Vice Chairs and Members of the Committee. Ian Hiraoka with DLNR Land Division. Uh just briefly, you know, we oppose this bill because of the significant sort of upfront and ongoing um management and regulatory burdens this would place on the department that is um like I said, unfunded and also outside of the department's mission. You know, it's, this is largely a a system to support agriculture and we don't believe that DLNR is the appropriate agency. And like I said, um it would uh impose quite a bit of um burdens, but like I said, not just upfront but ongoing. Also, we would just note that um outside of our testimony that the the board is also both the, you know, the over the uh the managing authority over both the dam safety program and you know, our the department who would manage the lands and be responsible for maintaining the reservoirs under this bill. So you know, there's a potential, I don't want to say conflict, but there's some issues there. So and we'll also be available for any questions. Thank you.
All right. And in other words, you're saying more or less um it's best suited for Department of Agriculture.
Exactly, yes.
Yeah, all right. Thank you very much. Um Ulupono Initiative, Mica Munikata. And thank you for your testimony, Mica.
Afternoon Chair Inoue, Chair Gaver, Vice Chairs and Members of the Committee, Mica Munikata on behalf of the Ulupono Initiative. We stand in our written testimony in support of this measure. Um you know, this system i- is is up for sale, um plain and simple. But it's a very critical system for agriculture. I think you've heard uh previous testimony in both this hearing and and others around the critical need to maintain water infrastructure for agricultural production. Um this is one of those instances where the state has an opportunity to really take on a system and continue to show its commitment to agriculture. Um you know, seeing this this system fall into the the hands of a a private individual or potentially even abandoned would be drastic to to agricultural operations within that region. So it's really an important time for us to look at, you know, the feasibility of taking on this system and and really um continuing to support agriculture. Again, this is this is one system that that we should look at acquiring. There's many other systems we should look to maintain and repair. Again, um can't emphasize the need for for water infrastructure for the future of our food security here within the state. Thank you very much Chair.
Uh thank you Mica. Uh Farm Bureau. Brian?
Thank you Chairs, Members of the Committees. Brian Miyamoto here on uh behalf of Hawaii Farm Bureau. Uh we'll stand on our written testimony in support. Just want to highlight one point. I think I heard Ulupono say it also. Our our concern is if the state doesn't buy it, who will buy it? And that entity, will they have an interest in agriculture whether ways the water rates are completely cut off the water? Uh these are speculations, but we know the city, uh the state would would have uh farmers' interests at hand. We're not sure if a private entity that purchases this system would. Um so we we do ask for your support uh again for this and many other water infrastructure measures that have come before you. Thank you for this opportunity to testify.
Um thank you. Uh Dole Food Company, Daniel Nellis. Daniel, are you available? You're up Dole. I see Daniel there. Yeah, you're, you need to unmute yourself Daniel. Here we are. Proceed.
Can you hear me now?
We surely can.
Okay, thank you Chair. Uh Chairs and Vice Chairs and Committee Members, uh we have submitted a written testimony. And I I do want to make it brief for you, so I won't read the whole testimony, but I just want to make sure that I'm available for questions and that everybody understands the reason Dole is selling this system is because there is a mandated spillway expansion design uh at Waikiki Reservoir that may cost as much as twenty million dollars. Uh this would essentially put Dole out of business in Hawaii. Uh so if Dole had to decommission or breach the dam, that would be a tremendous loss for flood control, recreational assets and irrigation for farming that it now serves. Uh Dole actually set the price at twenty million uh just because that's what the cost of the spillway improvement would be. We uh and you heard Jimmy Nakatani talk about maybe changing the bill to say take over uh the cost of the spillway because Dole is ready to gift the system if the state is going to take that liability cost. The state would be able to float bonds. The state would be able to access federal money for infrastructure improvements. Uh private owner like Dole cannot access that. The key thing here is that we're talking about uh currently five hundred farm jobs in central Oahu are tied to this reservoir. Many more farm jobs will be available as ADC opens up more of its land that will also be served by the irrigation system. In addition, there's opportunity for future future use for hydroelectricity and possibly even uh purifying the water for uh potable water consumption. And and that could be feasible if you powered it from the hydroelectricity. So I I urge the state to take advantage of this opportunity now. And we are not trying, we hope not to sell to a private investor. We hope that the state will step up. Thank you very much.
Daniel, I have several questions and I'm sure uh uh this is important for for our um members of both committees as well. How many acres aside from the spillway? How many total air uh acres are within this um sale?
The the actual reservoir is over two hundred something acres and then the system is basically ditches and tunnels that would be transferred as easements. They pass through many landowners' properties, not just Dole's property. Uh normally the easement would be anywhere from ten to forty feet wide. Uh but total acres that would go in the transfer would probably be less than three hundred acres. There's several small uh TMKs along the edge of the lake that actually belong to the co-owner and we leased them. And uh that's part of uh when the dam was first built, Galbreth Estate land is where the spillway was built. So we pay a lease on that annually and in addition to small coastline uh TMKs.
Okay, just to uh confirm again, you're saying that you have a lessees then on your lands that you own? Or you're leasing additional land?
We're leasing, we're leasing the spillway section from a sustainable Hawaii company. And uh that that is the successor owner of Galbreth Estate.
Okay, but you're saying that part of this sale includes a spillway of two hundred acres?
No, no, the lake itself is about two hundred acres. The spillway area is probably somewhere around thirty acres.
Okay, is this?
The spillway and a little bit of the underwater area.
Okay, so back to uh I'm a little confused. Is the spillway, the spillway part of the sale?
The spillway is not part of the sale. The spillway is leased.
Okay, so the, so we're talking about the reservoir?
Yes.
Okay, so the reservoir itself uh is with, is not within this twenty two hundred acres, right?
No, the reservoir is within the two hundred acres. The spillway section is not within the two hundred acres. Okay, so there's an additional possibly thirty acres or less owned by the uh spillway owner. And the spillway owner uh is likely to sell his And the spillway owner is likely to sell his portion to the state of Hawaii as well. There is a lease that we pay approximately north of 100,000 a year. And that inflates with the inflation rate. It's in the contract.
Only, Daniel, but we're only talking about negotiations with, with Dole. So, okay, having said that, so the total lands aside from the reservoir, how many other, how many total acres? And would it be beneficial for continuing agriculture activity outside of the reservoir? So how many acres is available for, for ag activity?
So, just so we're clear, the reservoir system feeds into an irrigation distribution system.
Okay.
Which goes from Wahe'au all the way down to the North Shore. And it serves thousands of acres.
So does it also include?
We do not own all those acres any longer.
Okay, does that reservoir also feed into Kunea where all the, most of the ag activity is?
No, it does not feed into Kunea. It could be pumped toward Kunea, but it does not. The gravity feeds towards central and north Oahu.
Okay.
Where there is abundant ag activity. 50 farms, 500 farm jobs currently. And much land that is already owned by the state of Hawaii that is not fully leased with farmers yet.
So aside from the reservoir again, how many of this property that's for sale is available for agriculture activity? We're not buying only the reservoir, right?
No, you're buying the reservoir and the irrigation system.
Okay.
Not, not the land that the system serves. You already own much of that land.
Okay, okay, all right.
You already own much of it, not all of it. Others is owned by private owners.
Okay.
I would say the state probably owns 15 to 2, 1500 to 2,000 acres, that range. I could be.
Around the irrigation system then?
Yeah, I could be on the high side, but over 1,000 acres.
Okay, just wanted to be clear. I just thought that it included additional lands around the reservoir. But we're, we're, we're in particular with this SB 2480 is just the irrigation system as noted?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, anybody else has a question? Yes, Senator Revere?
Thank you. For Dan, Dan Nellis. Thanks Dan, hi. So the 20, so the plan is Dole gifts the irrigation system to the state because of the liability with the spillway and the dam. And the repairs are estimated in the vicinity of $20 million. But the 20 million is not necess, it's on, as you said, the consortium that, or the other business that owns the spillway. Is that, is that the intent here? Just?
The spillway repair is on the section owned by Sustainable Hawaii. It's under lease to us. And if we gift the system or sell the system, we also are transferring that lease. And so the, the repair will not be impeded by the landowner. It's actually, as the lessie, it's our requirement to, to keep that spillway up to regulatory standard. And that's in the lease as well as mandated by the state.
But that's a separate action from what this bill would be. Is that, it, so this bill is to acquire the irrigation system?
Yes, yes.
But not necessarily to spend 20 million to, not to Dole. But it's to realize that there's a $20 million investment yet to go to the spillway repairs.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
That's correct.
Thank you. Thank you Chair.
Okay, any other questions? Yes, Senator Acasio?
Chair, my question is to ADC, Jimmy Nakatani, he's available.
Jimmy, are you available?
Yes, yes.
Hi, thank you. I'm just curious if you can expand on or enlighten us as to potential litigation that may be coming down of line? Or you could also, or you can expand on in your, in your testimony, you did bring up contentious, like contentious issues.
I think the contentious issue is that Dole is being forced to fix the spillway because it's a liability. And rightfully so, dam safety is concerned because of the safety of the, integrity of the dam, right? The spillway. And that's something that, you know, that's their job to do it and they're following through. The whole situation is that, and if you ask any agency, would you take on this, this liability of fixing the spillway and running the dam? Everybody would say no. And so my suggestion was that this needs to go to maybe the governor's office. You know, upstairs, a policy decision, but this is not for just one agency to work on. This is really, really important to not only Wahe'au. As Dan mentioned, flood control, but you know, you know, the, the community is downstream. Because, you know, and someone pointed out that, you know, a while ago, there was a flooding and part of the, you know, Waileua didn't get flooded, but Halelewa got flooded. And the reason for that is because it has, you know, the dam serves as a flood control body. You know, that kind of stuff. But, you know, just to point out that everybody has a stake in this. City and County of Honolulu is on the consent decree. They put their sewage in there. DLNR has fishing in there. Irrigation really is a small part of it. It's a, it's an important part of it, but irrigation is not the only theme to this whole thing. And that's the reason why we said, you know, we need a meeting of the minds and it should maybe come from the governor and to convene this. But the bill is important just to keep the conversation going and make sure the health and welfare of the, you know, the community downstream is not jeopardized. And that's the reason why, that's my concern is like, we put the money there. We need to fix it and then we can sort out and argue about who does what and everything else like that. But it's important just to move this legislation forward and have a bigger discussion.
That's it Senator? Okay, thank you. Any other questions with regards to SB 2480? Senator Acasio, Mr. Lucha?
Yes, yes Chair. So I'm intrigued by this idea that the future use could be either for hydroelectricity or a water purification system. That's in the testimony of Dole.
Excuse me.
Can Dole address that? Have you started any preliminary studies? How, okay. How comfortable or confident are you that that can, that there really is such a potential? Because as ADC pointed out, this should not just benefit Wahe'au, but the rest of the state or island.
Right. For hydroelectricity, there has been more than one private investor who is interested in becoming the owner so they can have a hydroelectric system. We also have heard from some studies that Senator De La Cruz has looked into about hydroelectricity if the state was the owner. The water purification is something that has been discussed recently with the Board of Water Supply. It has not been vetted further than that. The concept is that if we're worried about aquifer water availability in the future, we have a 3 billion gallon reservoir at Wahe'au that the technology already exists for water purification. It's highly energy dependent. So if you combine it with the hydroelectricity production, then it could make affordable pure water. This again has not been fully vetted and designed out in any way. The hydroelectric, more than one of the private investigators has already done some groundwork, but they're not sharing it because it's proprietary to them.
Okay, Senator, Mr. Lucha, does that answer your questions? There's opportunity. Yeah, I have to move this along.
Okay, okay, no worries.
Our committee has three other measures and we're limited for water and land because AEN also continues after we're done with the joints. I just wanted to advise all of you. Okay, anyone else?
Good Chair, thanks.
SB 2480. Okay, Hearing Non Members, let's proceed with SB 3299 relating to sustainability. And this requires DLNR to recognize that game mammals and game birds provide a sustainable food source and play a role in nature Hawaiian traditional and customary practices. Barre quality habitat and should be managed to reduce impacts and provide benefits in reducing grass fire fuels and weed control to important watershed. DLNR?
Good afternoon Chairs, Vice Chairs and Members of the Committee. Marigold Zoll on behalf of the Department of Land and Natural Resources. We offer comments for the measure. Can we stand on our testimony? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hawaii County Game Management Advisory Commission is Abraham Antonio to speak on behalf of the group. Aloha Abraham, proceed.
Hello, thank you Chairs and Vice Chairs and Committee. I strongly support this bill and you guys can read my testimony. And I strongly oppose the DLNR's statements that they're, want to make changes. That's all I want to do at this time, thank you.
Thank you very much. Hawaii Firearms Coalition, Todd Yukutaki?
Aloha Committees, Chair, Vice Chair Member. I'm Todd Yukutaki with the Hawaii Farms Coalition and we support SB 3299. Hunting and the right to keep and bear arms go hand in hand. Our members want more protections on hunting rights and lands. Please support this bill. Mahalo.
Thank you very much. Nani Pogline? Or Pogline? Sense testimony and support. Is anyone else wishes to speak on SB 3299? Chair would like to say that we did receive many testifiers in support, 28, one opposition, and that one opposition is the agency and three comments. Anyone else?
I am here, Nani Pogline.
Okay, if you can stand on your testimony or condense your testimony. Mahalo.
Okay, I would like, I would like to condense it. The bill grew out of advocacy in Hawaii communities concerned for our game resources. They've been up against a windstorm from native species protection agendas. The DLNR is instructed to preserve, protect, promote public hunting. But state lands referred to as game management areas are fenced, eradicated of game animals and often remove, removing them from their prime habitat, casting them into arid lands. They're fenced off from watering units and migratory patterns left to forage and do damage along fenced lines and roadways. Thus, page two, line four and six. Also, I wanted to say that the DLNR contests that it should be in there that native Hawaiian traditional customary practices are a part of, it should be a part of this bill that, but organizations like Native Hawaiian Gathering Rights Association on Molokai with many members strongly oppose that claim.
Nani, you're already beyond your two minutes. So sorry, but we do have your testimony and thank you for sharing that with us as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishes to speak on this measure? As identified, we do have your testimonies. Okay, Members, if you can join me in just having two more measures before this committee as well. SB 2023 relating to Hawaiian fish bonds. It requires DLNR to utilize the current state of the knowledge in marine finfish hatchery production to establish a functional system to provide puama and puava to stock local ea. And here to testify on this measure, DLNR? Either one. Yeah, Brian, are you taking this one?
Yeah, I'm taking this one for DLNR. Brian Nielsen, Administrator Division of Aquatic Resources. Aloha Chairs, Members of the Committee. We stand on our written testimony, appreciating the intent of the bill and providing some comments. And basically, we're up for the challenge, but it is going to require additional capacity and resources. So we would need an appropriation to be able to implement this bill. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Thank you DLNR. We do have Kimiu Ono coming, an individual in support. Are, Kimi, are you available?
Not present Chair.
Okay, thank you. We do have support, our four people in support, no opposition. We do have three comments as well. Members, any questions on Senate Bill 2023? Okay, Hearing Non, then let's proceed to the joint last item for the Waterland N A E N. And this is SB 2768 relating to the Hawaii Youth Conservation Corps. And this authorizes the Governor to designate the Department of Land and Natural Resources to administer entry into agreement for the administration of a Green Jobs Youth Corps to provide temporary work and training opportunities in the fields of natural resource management, agriculture and other sustainability related professions to young adults ages 26 and younger. Okay, DLNR. Is it Marigold?
Yes, good afternoon Chair, Vice Chairs and Members of the Committee. The Department supports this bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Testifying for Kupu, John Liang. Thank you so much for all you do. Proceed.
Aloha Chairs and Vice Chairs and Committee Members. Thank you so much for hearing this bill today. In the interest of time, I just want to stand on my written testimony and strong support. We have one small comment and just to say thank you for your past support. HB 1176 was passed last year. And so far, we've seen some really wonderful early successes. We filled over 130 positions in the fields that you mentioned Chair. And we had over 250% more applicants than there were positions available. And there were over 300 requests from employers in the green jobs areas. So we're very grateful and thankful for the support. Aloha, and I'm available for any questions.
Okay, why don't one of your comments as well? Why don't you share that with us now about your age limit?
Yeah, the comment would be to increase the age limit to 38 years of age. And so that was just to provide a broader opportunity.
Okay, and what is it presently for our members?
26 years of age.
Okay, and you're, you want to extend that to have additional, more members and training?
Correct, yep. And right now, we have about 50% of our participants are on the neighbor islands. And we just feel like it provides more opportunities for folks throughout the state to participate in these desired fields.
Okay, thank you so much. If you can remain in case there's questions. Testifying for Ryu Savai, Queen Buteon? Aloha Queen.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chairs, Members of the Committee. Thanks so much, really appreciate it. We're one of the host sites for the current Kupuana Corps Program. And I just wanted to share, it's just been incredible. We have 10 participants working with us now, various roles. And it's making a really big impact for our mission and also just advancing their skills and creating more opportunities and sustainable jobs. And so, yeah, really supportive of this, of this program in general and hope that it continues forward and we can do it again next year.
Well, thank you. Thank you for reuse. And we're glad you were able to extend reuse throughout the neighbor islands as well. Thank you so much. Okay, Members, any questions with regards to SB 2768? Okay, Hearing Non, Chair Gaver. I am prepared to go in taking the vote so you can continue your hearings thereafter. So are you ready for decision making now or you need to go into a break room?
I'm ready right now, I guess.
Okay, all right. We'll hand it over to you then to start your decision making on the, your bills before us.
All right, so starting with SB 24, 2946 relating to irrigation, having to do with the Kawai ditch irrigation system. Yeah, my recommendation would be to pass as is. Members, any concerns or comments? Chair Noi? Chair Inouye?
Waterland agrees with you as well.
Okay, all right. So for the vote, Chair will vote aye. Vice Chair Nishihara?
Vice Chair goes aye. Senator Acasio. Senator Rhodes. Excuse. Senator Favela. Motion's adopted.
Okay, for the Committee on Water and Land, same recommendation is to pass SB 2946 with amendments. Any discussion? Hearing none. Senator Misalucha, do you have the votes?
Do, I have the vote sheet.
Yes, Chair votes aye.
Chair votes aye on SB 2946 for Committee on Water and Land. Chair recommends pass with amendments. Senator Inouye votes aye.
Sorry, I'm sorry. We need to correct that. SB 2946 is to pass as is.
Oh.
I stand corrected.
Okay, so Chair recommends passes is for SB 2946, and this is for Committee on Water and Land, and Chair votes aye. Vice Chair Agarwal?
Aye.
Senator Misalucha votes aye. Senator Riviere?
Aye.
Senator Favela?
Aye.
Chair with five votes, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you.
Next measure is in SB 2996 relating to ants. Let's see, the Chair's recommendation will be to pass, actually, yeah, to pass as is. Is there any concerns? Chair votes aye. AEN Vice Chair?
Vice Chair goes aye. Senator Acasio?
Aye.
Senator Rhodes?
Aye.
No, I mean, aye.
Okay, Senator Favela, five votes, yes. Aye. Adopted. Thank you, Members.
Okay, thank you for the Committee on Water and Land. Chair's recommendation is to pass SB 2996 as is. Any discussions? Hearing none. Chair votes aye. Senator Misalucha for the vote.
For Committee on Water and Land, for all members present, are there any reservations? Any names? Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to SB 2964, authorizing recreational athletic venues and cultural activities on existing golf courses within ag districts. Members, I'd like to recommend that we move this bill along, you know, helping out these small businesses that have been hit by the pandemic. I really don't see a problem with little league practice or Pee Wee football on golf courses or luos or weddings, so I think it's worth continuing the conversation. So I'd like to amend this measure by defecting the date to January 1, 2050. Any concerns or comments?
Waterland agrees.
Chair votes aye. Vice Chair?
Senate Bill 2964 pass with amendments. Chair?
I think we're in 2964.
Yeah, 2964. Chair voted aye, right?
Yes.
Okay, Vice Chair goes aye. Senator Acasio? Senator Acasio?
Reservation?
Reservation. Senator Rhodes?
Aye.
Senator Favela? Senator Favela. Okay, motion is adopted.
Thank you, Members.
Thank you. The Committee on Water and Land, Chair's recommendation on SB 2964 is pass with amendments. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Chair votes aye. Senator Misalucha for the vote.
For Senate Bill 2964 for the Committee on Water and Land, for all members present, are there any reservations?
Reservation.
Reservations for Senator Favela. Any objections? Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Okay, moving on to SB 2664, protection relating to the protection of taro. Members, I would like to amend this by adding the amendment by DLNR, deleting the Board of Land and Natural Resources and putting in the LUC in Section 4. Any concerns or questions? Okay, Chair votes aye. Vice Chair?
Vice Chair goes aye. All members present, any voting with opposition or reservation, seeing none, motion's adopted.
Thank you, Members.
Okay, for the Committee on Water and Land, Chair's recommendation is to pass SB 2664 with amendments. Any discussion? Okay, Chair votes aye on this measure. Senator Misalucha for the vote.
For Senate Bill 2664, Chair votes aye. For those members present, are there any reservations? Any objections? Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you.
Then moving on to SB 2665 relating to the protection of taro as well. On this measure here, I would like to incorporate the amendments that were made by DLNR. They're quite lengthy, but any concerns or questions? Chair votes aye. Vice Chair?
Vice Chair goes aye. Members present, any voting with reservations or in opposition, seeing none, motion's adopted.
Thank you, Members.
Committee on Water and Land, Chair's recommendation is to pass SB 2665 with amendments. Any discussion? Hearing none. Chair votes aye. Senator Misalucha for the vote.
In reference to SB 2665, Chair votes aye, pass with amendments. For all members present, any reservations? Any objections? Hearing none. Chair, your recommendations adopted.
And moving on to SB 3011 relating to ag leases. Let's see here. The Chair's recommendation will be to pass with amendment. I'd just like to, there's still a lot of conversation going on on this one. Senator Acasio, your suggestion about Farm Bureau coming up with some amendments, so it's still a work in progress. I'd like to defect the amendments by defecting the date to January 1, 2050. Any concerns? Chair votes aye. Vice Chair?
Okay, members present, any voting with opposition or with reservation, seeing none, motion's adopted.
Thank you, Members.
Thank you. Chairs, for the Committee on Water and Land, Chair's recommendation is to pass SB 3011 with amendments. Any discussion? Hearing none. Chair votes aye. Senator Misalucha for the vote.
Members, we are voting on SB 3011. For those members present, any reservations? Any objections? Hearing none. Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you.
Chair?
Yes, Senator?
Yeah, all of you guys.
Aloha.
311, I have reservations on both committees. Sorry, I don't have time getting on.
So noted, Senator.
Got it. Vice Chair Nishihara?
The members present on Senate Bill 2480?
No, 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 wait, wait. It's just Senator Favela, reservations on 311.
Okay, so I'll make the correction.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Senator Gabbard. Shall I continue then?
Please.
Okay, for SB 2480, and this is relating to the Wahe'ua irrigation system, Chair's recommendation that we pass this measure will defect the date to July 1, 2050, and I'd like, we'd like to add that on page one, lines 15 to 16, and page two on line five, we're replacing DLNR, the agency, and put it under DOA as one of the purchasing agencies of the Wahe'ua irrigation system, keep it in agriculture, and we'd like to amend the Geo Bonds lapse date and the lapse by 2024. Any discussions? And this measure is, will continue on to the Committee on Ways and Means for further discussions as well. And so, Members, any questions?
Yes.
Members, yes, Senator Riviere?
Aloha, yeah, Gil Riviere. I noted, I would like to note, or we should be cognizant that the testimony from Dole was that the $20 million would not be for the acquisition, but rather for capital improvements that will need to be made later. So I'm in support of this bill and want to move it forward, but I think as it's written, it appears to be a $20 million purchase, when the actual purchase price is zero, and the capital improvement to repair it is estimated to be $20 million. So I think as the bill goes forward, it should that, I think, important technicalities should catch up with it.
Thank you, Senator. I think that's a good suggestion. We'll note that in the Committee Report, as the measure moves along to Ways and Means as well, addressing that concern. Yes, Senator Acasio?
Aloha, thank you, Chair. I also have a concern that we had large amounts of opposition testimony from DLNR, however, now it's been changed to Department of Ag, but we haven't heard from the department themselves, and that that would be really critical to our decision-making.
Okay, why don't we add that into the Committee Report as well, addressing that because of the change, amending the bill, that for continued discussions at the next committee, hopefully, they'll have some comments at that time. Thank you for that as well.
I do have one more thing as well, that we really do not know. It sounds like we have no clear understanding of what the financial burden will be currently and/or even moving forward, that we are imposing on the state and Department of Agriculture as well, and that there are many unanswered questions when it comes to that, including potential litigation in the future, as well as things like how climate change may have impacted the amount of water being delivered, et cetera. So there's a lot of unanswered questions with this measure. Thank you.
We'll add that to the concerns as well into the Committee Report. Any further discussions on SB 2480? Okay, seeing none, then for the Committee on Water and Land, Chair's recommendation is to pass SB 2480 with amendments. Any discussions for Waterland? Senator Misalucha for the vote. Chair goes aye.
Members, this is in reference to SB 2480, recommends pass with amendments. Chair votes aye. For the remaining members, are there any reservations?
Reservation.
Reservations for Senator Favela. Any objections? Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you.
Same recommendation for AEN. Any concerns that have not been expressed already? Chair votes aye. Vice Chair?
Okay, of the members present, any voting with reservations or in opposition?
Reservations.
Okay, motion's adopted.
Reservation.
Senator Acasio? Reservations, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll proceed then with SB 3299 relating to sustainability. Chair's recommendation on this measure will defect the date to July 1, 2050, and will adopt DLNR's proposed amendments as well, and will adopt the Farm Bureau's proposed amendments, and that certainly does not conflict with the amendments made by DLNR, as noted. Any further discussion? And I just want to add that this is a measure that's sort of long overdue. Personally, I'm one of those big purchases of buying fish from the fishermen, as well as all those good stuff that the hunters cook and sell for their living. So Chair's recommendation is to pass SB 3299 with amendments. Okay, for the Committee on Water and Land, Chair votes aye if there's no discussion. Okay, Senator Misalucha for the vote.
Members, we are voting on SB 3299 with the Chair voting aye. Are there any reservations? Any objections? Hearing none. Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Same recommendation for AEN. Any discussion? Chair votes aye. Vice Chair?
Of the members present, any voting with reservations or in opposition, seeing none, motion's adopted.
Thank you, Members.
Thank you. The final bill?
No, two more.
Oh, yes, sorry. One, two more, actually. SB 2023 relating to Hawaiian fish ponds, Chair's recommendation is to pass this measure will be defecting the date to July 1, 2050, and we'll adopt the technical and non-substantive amendments. Chair would like to add, as comments were made on the measure, that there's no funding, so the Chair would also insert a blank appropriation section for this needed measure. Any discussion? Hearing none. For the Committee on Water and Land, Senator Misalucha for the vote. Chair votes aye.
Chair votes aye for SB 2023.
With amendments.
Recommendation is to pass with amendments. For those members present, are there any reservations? Any names? Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Same recommendation for AEN. Any concerns? Discussion? Chair votes aye. Vice Chair?
Okay, of the members present, any voting with opposition or reservations, seeing none, motion's adopted.
Thank you, Members.
For our measure, SB 2768, and this is relating to the Hawaii Youth Conservation Corps, Chair's recommendation is to pass this measure with amendments that includes defecting the date to July 1, 2050, and certainly, we support the comments from Kupu, and the other amendment would be that we raise the eligible participant age limit to 38 years old. Any discussion on the recommendations with amendments? Seeing none for the Committee on Water and Land, Chair's recommendation is to pass SB 2768 with amendments. For the vote, Senator Misalucha, Chair goes aye.
For SB 2768, the Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair votes aye. Senator, Vice Chair Agarwal?
Aye.
Senator Misalucha votes aye. Senator Riviere?
Aye.
Senator Favela?
Aye.
Chair recommendation is adopted.
Thank you.
Same recommendation for AEN. Any discussion? Chair votes aye. Vice Chair?
Of the members present, any voting with opposition or reservations, seeing none, motion's adopted.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Agriculture Committee. Aloha.
And thank you, Waterland. For our AEN members, we'll have a 2 o'clock, two members, two measures on our decision-making will resume immediately after this hearing, and this adjourns the 1 o'clock joint AEN Waterland. Mahalo. Chair Gabbard, do we need to switch links, or is it on here?
Oh, sorry. Oh, okay. Sorry, I completely forgot.
Waterland is staying here.
I was ready to leave. Thank you for the Committee on Water and Land. Thank you for those out there in Zoom land. We're hearing SB 2502 and some, just some housekeeping announcements, and we'd like to say that this meeting, including the audio and video of remote participants, is being streamed live on YouTube, and you will find links to viewing options for all of our Senate meetings on the live and on-demand video page of the Legislature's website, and on the link posted on the hearing notice. In the unlikely event that we have to abruptly end this hearing due to technical difficulties... due to technical difficulties, the committee will reconvene on outstanding business at 2:00 PM on Friday, February 18th, in this room and on Zoom, and we hope that doesn't happen, but a public notice will be posted on the Legislature's website. And for the testifiers participating remotely, your audio will be muted and video disabled until shortly before it's your turn to testify. And for today, the time limit per testifier is 1 minute. Okay, chairs, let's proceed then with SB 2502, and this is relating to the Hawaii Community Development Authority, and this increases the terms for public auction sales or leases from the 65 years to 99 years. HCDAs, is Deepak to testify for the committee?
Hey Chair, you know, Deepak is not here, but this is. Yeah, hi Senator Noi.
Yeah, proceed.
Okay, well, Chair Noi, Vice Chair Keith Agarwal, and members of the committee, I'm really thankful for the opportunity to testify today. Since I had asked for this bill to be heard, let me quickly, quickly provide some context for this. Our support for this bill and the changes it makes to the statute is really limited to the opportunities we see to develop more affordable housing and housing in both our Kalailoa district and our Kakaoko Community Development Districts. Let me just elaborate. In both those districts, we do not own any developable land. So in order to be part of the solution to address the housing shortage, although this is, we can only do a small part, we want to be part of the solution, and our goal is to try to acquire land from private landowners, and look for an opportunity to maybe market and sell a leasehold housing project, something that hasn't been done for a long time in Hawaii, but see if we can market it. And the concept we have is a leasehold housing project with maybe shared district parking in Kakaoko that can be used by the residents and surrounding businesses, a problem that has faced central Kakaoko for a long time. So if we can do that, we can test the feasibility of it. And I know there's a lot of issues with the 99-year lease that have been raised, but I think those are details that still need to be worked out. One more thing, if you can indulge me, Senator. I'd like to, I've seen the testimony and reviewed the thoughtful testimony of others that oppose this. So I'd like to offer an amendment, if I may. We can amend the HCD statute to allow 99-year leases on non-seeded lands. And then on non-seeded lands, let me just be clear about that. And then on seeded lands, the limit would be 65 years. The land development proposal that I just mentioned, again, these are going to be lands that we acquire in fee from a private landowner that the HCD would own, and that we would maybe procure a developer who could develop that kind of project in both the Kalailoa and the Kakaoko district. Again, it's just our small part of the solution, but we think that in a problem that's statewide, we should be part of the solution and not part of the problem. Thank you very much for your time, and I appreciate any questions you might have.
Okay, can I ask you then to clarify one thing though? Did you say that Kalailoa lands are, were the purchase from, that's considered private lands?
No, I mean, Senator, we're considering, we're considering, and it's still in the discussion stages, so I can't really provide too many more details, but we're looking to purchase land in both the Kalailoa and the Kakaoko Community Development District. The purchase of the land in Kakaoko is a little bit farther along. But that's, but at least that's relevant to this testimony and this bill, both properties are being or will be acquired from a private landowner.
Okay, okay, and that, okay, so going back to only Kakaoko, how many acres is Kakaoko's future purchase?
So it would be around 20,000, maybe 2,000, 10,000 square foot lots.
Okay, in Kakaoko, can you tell us like where, beyond what streets it travels on?
It's in central Kakaoko, it's in central Kakaoko around Queen Street. And Senator, you're very familiar with Kakaoko and HCD, but that area, central Kakaoko, is really in need of, you know, district parking. There's not a lot of parking in the area. So part of the concept would be to create this shared parking that could be used by businesses and people around that area, and the residents in this.
So that parcel, do you know if it's vacant or?
It's not vacant, it has a tenant on it.
Oh, okay, okay, so you said Queen, Queen and what?
It borders Queen and Kuaia Streets, I believe.
Okay, and the other one at Kalailoa?
It's in downtown Kalailoa, somewhere on Saratoga Road.
And that's private?
That is also private, that is also private.
Okay.
And just, I'm sorry, and just coincidentally, you know, that's Saratoga Road is where we're proposing to lay down an electrical and communications corridor. That's another, that's a CIP request that's pending right now.
Okay, thank you, and we'll call one more person, and we'll open it up for questions. Sierra Club, Wayne Tanaka, you're there, thank you Wayne, aloha.
Aloha, good afternoon, Chair Noi, Vice Chair Keith Agarwal, members of the committee, Wayne Tanaka with the Circle of Hawaii. We do oppose this measure as written for the reasons in our written testimony. We do have suggested amendment that could mitigate our concerns. I also really appreciate HCD's willingness to explore, you know, other amendments that might also reduce some of the concerns we have with this bill. Otherwise, yeah, happy to answer any questions that the committee have, thank you.
Okay, Wayne, I know your amendments. Now, you just heard from HCD, and you understand the separation between the private lands and the seeded lands. So your amendment, I guess, for this particular measure is still okay, right, if we pass this with your amendment?
Yeah, I mean, I think our amendment would nick, you know, much longer-term leases consistent with the process for disposing of the fee of public lands. You know, I think it's, you know, happy to talk with HCD also about, you know, ways we could help facilitate what they want to do with private ones they acquire, while also, you know, providing safeguards against the alienation of public lands.
Okay, thanks Wayne. Members, we did have communication. Nine in opposition that we have received. Any questions, members, on SB 2502?
Yeah, any questions?
Yes, okay, Senator Favella to follow by Senator Rivera. Proceed, Senator.
HCD?
Craig?
Senator Favella.
Yeah, so my question is, since you guys are looking to buy private land and do development with private land purchasing, what is the reason for needing to have seeded lands, 65-year extensions? When you're talking about affordable homes in the district, especially that's what my district is, yeah? We get all of these beautiful words, affordable homes for the people, and then we get these extensions, and then take 65 years for building. So I'm just saying this because we have so much projects in my community with no roads, and they want to talk about how good it is to extend these leases because it's a great thing to sell and believe. But one question is that, why you need a 65-year lease if you're having these other areas to build? And then what are you guys trying to do in the liquidating of leasing or lease to own? Is that going to be on seeded land?
Thank you, Senator Favella, I'll try to answer your question. In our community development districts, the typical way that reserved housing is produced is when a landowner develops, or landowner comes in for a housing project, there's a certain, usually a 20% requirement to provide reserved housing. So that's been around for a long time, right, that concept? If we want to create more housing, one thought, Senator Favella, was to acquire land, not seeded lands, I don't think it's seeded lands, acquire lands from private landowner. And we could do, there's two options, several options we can do for affordable housing. We could do a light tech project, a rental project, right, working with HHFDC. We've done that in our district a lot. We could have a private developer build, you know, a housing community, and then they'd be subject to the 20% reserved housing. Or, or we could proactively go out and purchase land and try to build, you know, get a developer to build affordable housing. Some of that, that model has been done in our Kakaoko district with Nohona Hale on Cook Street. We had a 10,000, less than a 10,000 square foot lot where we put in about 110 micro units. We did it with Art Space Loss, Kaulima, Art Space Loss. So we'd do the same thing. And Senator Favella, I don't want this to kind of get mixed up with the seeded land issue. All we're saying is, maybe if we were allowed to have a lease, leased land that is non-seeded lands for a term of 99 years, maybe we can test market, test a concept, see if people would buy a leasehold condominium unit for 99 years, which could be priced a little bit less than a fee simple unit. And we'd still retain ownership of the underlying land through a ground lease. So I hope I've answered your question. I think our main focus is really to try to build housing, and this is a kind of a proactive way to try to do it for the agency that doesn't own developable land in either Kalailoa or Kakaoko.
Well, you answered my question on the commercial land, on the private owned land that you want to have this 65 and 99-year lease. What I'm asking is that incorporation of you guys' project in Kalailoa, there's a lot of other land, seeded land. I just want to know what you guys plan to do that, because right now, that's the problem we're having is the 65-year lease on seeded land. So we don't want to have that liquidated or long-term lease, 99-year lease on seeded land. So is this incorporating anything to do with any of the seeded land?
So Senator Favella, you know, the ownership of the land in Kalailoa is still sort of fragmented among various state agencies. The Navy still owns some land, Hunt still owns some land. DHHL also owns a lot of land in Kalailoa, as you know. I don't know what their plans are for leases, but we don't own any land seeded or otherwise, I don't, in Kalailoa, we do not. So if we do something like this, we have to purchase land to do this, do a kind of project like this.
Okay, one more question, just to follow up, so clarification. So when the Navy had decommissioned Baba's Point and Iroquois Point, all of that was supposed to be given back to the people. But for whatever Senator Noi and the Navy had owed money to Hunt, decided to give $100 million of inventory that still belonged to the people of Hawaii, never did relinquish it, and give them long-term leases and option to sell land in there. So just to clarify, so everybody out there understands, all of Baba's Point is Hawaiian land. No matter how you cut it up, the Navy never owned anything. They never owned that land. They decided to lease it out and sell it in portions because of whatever deal Hunt, and at that time, Senator Noi with Iroquois Point. So I have the information, I just was wondering, when we're going to get to that point? Because now, here we are chopping up everything in Baba's Point in my district to give other people to make profit and money, which is okay, but not again on the Hawaiian people's back. That's why I want to make sure that I'm clear, and I'm not going to support anything to do with any seeded land extensions on any 65-year over. If there's something different, then that's okay, but seeded land, there's no way I can support that. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, and just to clarify, Senator Favella's comments are to the late senior Senator Dan Inoue. Thank you, okay. Senator Favella, on that Baba's Point, I thought it was given back to the state years ago.
No, when Lingle wanted to take all that back, back when she was governor.
Yeah, I was here in the Senate, and that's why I'm trying to refresh my memory, because I was Chair of Waterland at that time, so what happened?
Denied, when that happened in Congress, the Navy owed Hunt development over 100-something million. So they brokered a deal with Iroquois Point and partial brokered a deal with Baba's Point to give.
With the Army then, with the Army, with the Navy.
With the Navy, and that's how that all transpired, and that's why we got a chop suey chopped up Baba's Point.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Chair, yeah, it wasn't this Senator Noi, was it?
Yeah, yeah, okay, all right, any other discussions, Senator Rivera?
HCD, just a follow-up question. Senator Rivera.
Thanks, so if this comes to be as you envisioned it, I just, just to be clear, is it a 99-year lease from, say, when the building opens and people move in? Or is it kind of a rolling 99 years whenever the next buyer acquires the place? Is that the intention?
So Senator, you know, those are the kind of details and things that need to be sort of worked out as a developer, you know, is selected or kind of think if this 99-year lease concept comes to fruition. But I think the idea is that there would be a ground lease of the land to a developer for 99 years. A condominium, you know, project or building would be built on that land, along with a shared parking garage.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So it goes with the building, not the individual owners?
Yeah, but Senator Rivera, I just want to be clear too, I'm sorry, that the unit that people own are going to be a leasehold unit instead of a fee simple unit with a 99-year term.
Right, but if somebody buys one 20 years from now, do they have 79 years to go, or do they have 99?
They have the remaining 79.
Yeah, okay, so it is a diminishing, it goes with the building, okay, just, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So another question on the Kakaoko, and you said the intentions are looking at a parking garage then? And not necessarily another, more condos or residential?
Senator, you're partially correct. The project would, at least what we're envisioning right now, would be a garage, a shared parking garage for the district and for the residents of the building. And we're actually trying to be innovative and do a robotic parking garage, an entirely robotic parking garage.
What's a robotic parking garage?
So if there's some robotic parking in town, it would be where you drive your car on a pallet, and then the machinery moves your car. So if you kind of see, somebody equated to, you know, those Carvana ads where there's a blue outside and the car is moving around. So it would be, we're going to try in concept, this is where I think we're trying to be innovative, do a robotic parking garage, and then a leasehold condominium project.
Okay, is the parking garage going to be available for public as well, for nearby like restaurants? You know, Honolulu seems to be so. Uh, Honolulu seems to be, um, so, uh, so busy and you want to make sure that there's pu, public parking as well?
That's, that's the idea with this.
That's the idea, okay.
Shared parking, yeah.
Shared, shared parking and then with the residential portion.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Uh, members, any other questions? Okay, Senator Misalucha.
Uh, for Craig. Um, I know that, uh, during the testimony of Sierra Club, they mentioned about the friendly amendment. But I, I'm not sure if I missed it, but are you, uh, okay with that amendment? Are you, do you think that that would solve some of the concerns? That's the amending page one, line nine.
Yeah, I, I, I certainly appreciate, um, Mr. Tanaka's comments and his amendment. Um, in the time that I've had, his, his comment sort of ties the sixty-five year leases and that to section one seventy-one. Um, I haven't had time to look at, to that, but I would prefer, I would prefer that we, with working with Mr. Tanaka, that we do a simpler amendment, as I suggested that. Um, either that says something like, um, the leases for, you know, under that H C D A section two oh six E fourteen be for a term not exceeding ninety-nine years. Maybe provided however, that leases on seeded lands, uh, shall be have a term not exceeding sixty-five years or something like that. Um, I can provide, I can, yeah, I can provide some language for clarity later, but that's the concept. Thank you, Senator Misalucha.
Yeah, that's, that's, um, Craig, that's, um, when I, I talked to Wayne, um, I, I don't see a problem unless there's just one word or something, but uh, as I read it, conformity with the community development plan, provided that any lease exceeding in aggregate length of greater than sixty-five years shall be subject to the same requirements for the sale or gift of land as described in section one seventy-one uh, dash sixty-four seven. So if we just add, um, just similar, because I want to be clear that my recommendation was going to include his amendments. So, um, I, so maybe just a word there separating, uh, the ninety-nine year lease, um, referencing, uh, the seeded lands. Because I, I'd like to keep his, his amendments. And if we can add, okay, here's what we do then, why don't we do this? We'll, uh, I'll, we'll recommend that we adopt his amendments and also, um, uh, yes. Okay.
I, I.
Yeah, yeah, because I was going to, you know, recommend that we adopt the Sierra Club's amendments, but if, um, in the meantime, as we move this, that I'd like to address at least, make sure that recognizing, um, what you considered, uh, I guess, in discussion with Wayne to come up with additional language.
Yeah, I, I, Senator, um, you know, respectfully, I, 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 I understand where Mr. Tanaka is coming from. But I wonder if a simpler amendment, like I'm suggesting, might work and then allow me, and then as this, to, at least to allow this bill to proceed, uh, for further discussion.
Okay, you know what then, uh, Craig, what we'll do is, I'll, I'll stay with my amendments. This ba, measure goes with the, uh, actually the two important, um, final, uh, committees of W A, uh, W A M and G B C. So, you know, and, and we'll note that in our committee report that, um, uh, that further amendments, uh, will be probably consider, be considered as this measure moves. Okay, but anyway, any further discussions, members? Okay, uh, hearing none then, um, the Chair would like to, uh, move SB twenty five oh two for further discussions, and I'd like to pass with these amendments, uh, that we defect the date to July first, two thousand and fifty. Um, and amend the, uh, H R S, uh, two oh six E dash fourteen, um, to allow H C D A to enter into leases for a term not exceeding, uh, ninety-nine years, except that leases for seeded lands shall have a term that does not exceed sixty-five years. Okay?
That's fine, that's fine.
Yes, members, any questions? Okay, I, hearing none. Excuse me, yes, okay. And I, I have to announce that. So what, I thought this was clear. And do I have to, um, amend? Okay, all right, okay, uh, members, uh, any discussions? Other than that, what we'll do is, uh, we'll pass SB twenty five oh two with amendments. Any discussions? Hearing none, um, Senator Misalucha for the vote, Chair goes aye.
Chair votes aye on SB two five zero two for Committee on Water and Land. Chair recommends pass with amendments. Chair votes aye, Vice Chair Agarwal.
Aye.
Senator Misalucha votes aye, Senator Revere.
With reservations.
Senator Favella.
No.
Chair, your recommendations.
Okay, thank you. This adjourns then the Committee on Water and Land for today, February sixteenth. Thanks, members.